I will call to order this special board of selectmen meeting of August twenty second, two thousand twenty-two. And as my always public service reminder to all attendees that while these meetings are public, they're meetings of the Board of Selectmen to meet and conduct the business of the board and are not to be confused with town meetings. There will be comment allowed during public comment, but please be, please wait to be called for and please announce your name for the record when you do speak. So our first item of business is approval of the minutes. So I will make a motion to accept the minutes of the August fourth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Any corrections or edits to those?
None that I have.
Alrighty. All those in favor of the motion? I, thank you. So we'll have our first public comment of agenda items and I will do a scan if people could, just because we have a lot of people on the call, either wave your virtual hand or turn your camera on and wave your actual hand. Far I don't see anybody.
Like you're gonna have to just do.
Alrighty, last call. Alrighty. Thanks.
I don't, this is McDonald, I don't have a camera, so. Okay, I'll wait and speak when the streetscape comes up on the agenda. But I do have, I know there are other people who would like to talk about it too. So I guess we'll wait till that, okay?
Um. So going into four point one correspondence, August tenth email from Mike Gobble is in the folder. So Mike sent an email to the board and the engineering firm SLR, Mike Doherty, who's our, our primary contact there regarding some concerns that he had with proper compaction beneath the curbing. We did, the streetscape committee did have a meeting, was that two Fridays ago, Mike? Forgive me.
Yeah, yes.
And there was I think good discussion at that meeting that I think will, unless you have anything that you'd like to say for this particular piece of correspondence, we can move in, move along and get to your, so we can get to the streetscape report.
Well, again, as far as, as you said, our streetscape committee recommend, wanted to recommend the concrete cradle rather than setting it on, on the process because we don't feel that the process is being compacted properly underneath the curbing. Since then, Mike Doherty has said that the state will not allow that. I'm looking at the state statues and it doesn't say anything against concrete. In fact, it says, it says, there just needs to be nine inches be from the top of it to, they want nine inches of blacktop on the curb side. It doesn't say anything about against concrete. It says the, it, it has, it just has to be cleaned on the faces and where it's placed underneath, it has to be nine inches below. So I would like, I don't know if Mr. Doherty or SLR are on this meeting. I would like to see where it says that we can't cradle this con, these curving in concrete. That's what our recommended, recommendation was from that meeting, but we have other issues that we would like to discuss when the streetscape time is.
So, so since we're discussing it, I'll have Mike Doherty, I saw Mike on the, there he is. Hi, Mike.
Hello.
If you can just sort of fill in the gaps and address the state specifications.
Sure. So, Mike, I'm not gonna be able to point you to a specific statute. I don't, I don't think that's an actual thing the state has. Their standard detail sheet, which I can send over to you, shows the granite curb set on process aggregate base with concrete only at the joints. As you know, in our discussions, our details did not show it that way originally. And they had a chance to review it, at least at the maintenance level of District Four. We got no comments. So when we talked about providing the concrete cradle, I thought it was, you know, something that we'd be able to potentially do. When I reached out to the state inspector, who's the one coming to the job weekly, not necessarily daily. He said that he did not think that was something that would be approved by his boss, who was Ron Ferris, who runs the permitting, encroachment permit for the state, which was had to be taken out for the project to be done, any other work to be done in the state right of way. So when I spoke to Ron and another gentleman there at the state, they said that they, they do not allow concrete under the curb or in the roadway because they do not want to encounter concrete as it's not a standard detail for the road. If there's any utility work that needs to be done or any future DOT work. So I said, I, I need a definitive answer. Yes or no? And they replied, this is a definitive answer. We do not want to see any concrete in the road.
Okay, well, um, again, I, I'm looking at the state statues and and it does not say you can't use it. Anyways.
So the, I haven't.
I'd like, I'd like to see it in writing because we believe it's the better way.
Our issue certainly already the email.
Okay, well, I'd, I'd like, I'd like to see it from the street. Because our issue is, we've seen them compact it underneath where they're putting the curbing. We have seen them lift it at least a couple of inches. And we have witnessed them tapping the curbing down with a four by four to grade. Now, this is a young guy about maybe a hundred and seventy pounds, I think, tapping it to grade. What if I stopped on it and tapped on it being two hundred and sixty pounds? I don't believe it is on properly compacted soil.
Mike, we, we, we did a density. Okay, so we, we went back out to that section of Bridge Street and did a density testing in and around that area of the sidewalk and the curbing and it all averaged out about ninety-five percent.
Okay.
So.
How can you, how can you do the testing directly underneath the curb?
Well, of course, we can't.
I, I did, again, I didn't dispute that they compacted the area before they set the cure curbing.
Well, we.
None of us have disputed that. What we're disputing is that they're raising it with uncompacted soil.
It's, it's, alright, so we addressed that issue early on after it was brought up that they can't shim it with anything more than a quarter inch, half inch of, of any material. Now.
Okay, sorry.
The fact that they're banging on the, the granite with the two by four or the four by four. They're literally just trying to, to knock it down into the material that quarter or half inch. I, the, the, the typical detail of using process aggregate like this and shimming it slightly happens on a regular basis. That material is not going to allow that curb to, to settle. Even if you go out and step on it, even, even if they shimmed it and you stepped on it, it would barely move.
So was this told, were they told this before they started north of the tracks?
On Route seven?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now they're using, what size item four would you call it that they're using there?
What size process aggregate?
Yes.
In the road, it's a one and a quarter?
Yeah, under the, in the sidewalk and under the sidewalk.
That's three quarter inch.
Well, it's at least inch and a quarter or larger.
No, well, that's in the roadway.
No, this is under the curtain.
That's part of the roadway.
Okay. So there, now, when they lift this, how are they gonna put an inch and a quarter stone underneath a quarter inch out of? Mike, look, I guess you're disgusted at what we're saying, okay? I'm not stupid. I'm not someone without experience. And nor is, nor is the, the other, nor are the other two people who are involved looking at this and trying to keep an eye on this. Between the three of us, there are a hundred and thirty-five years combined of construction, including sidewalks and roads, et cetera. So you're, you're, you're rolling your eyes and giving me this disgusted look. And we have a legitimate thing here that we're concerned about, along with several other issues.
Mike, I'm not rolling my eyes at all. If I'm, if I'm seeming frustrated, you're right. It is, it is frustrating because what you don't understand is that you're calling into question my professional, professional ability and my experience on a daily basis. So what I'm trying to do and what I've been doing all along is providing you the information and working with you and the rest of the group on the best possible outcome for this project. Now, if you and the rest of the group don't want to agree to the fact that this detail is sufficient and adequate and done on a regular basis, I'm not gonna be able to convince you otherwise. But what I'm trying to do is work with you all and get the outcome that we all want to see, which is a completed streetscape that is going to last, it's going to be durable. But the problem is, I don't get any headway because all I keep getting is pushback on every single idol.
Okay, let's, let's pass, let's move, let's move on from the compaction thing. If you've tested it, you've tested it. What I see and what I have pictures of, don't agree, but we'll agree to disagree on this, okay?
Sure.
Alright, we, right now, I mean, are we staying on this streetscape thing or do we have to move to something else and come back, Gene?
Um, we really should stick to the agenda because it's a special meeting, so I would like to just keep moving on.
I would like to speak about the streetscaping, please. What's that? Could I please speak about the streetscaping at some stage during this meeting?
Yes.
We're gonna come back to it. We do need to continue to move on. We've got a lot on the agenda and I need to, we just need to continue moving on, so we'll, we'll address it when.
I do not want to be silenced.
Where are we on the agenda?
We are only still under correspondence, four point one.
Okay, so streetscape, where is that on the agenda? I don't have one in front of me, I'm sorry.
Mike, it's all old business.
Eleven.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Eight point eleven.
What time approximately will I be, Jean?
I, they revoked my crystal ball when I left retail twenty years ago. I could not possibly guess.
Well, there was supposed to be a meeting more friendly to the working people at six thirty last Thursday. But, um, you know, four o'clock.
You know what, Mike, I'm, I'm gonna stop you because we can't, I can't continue to just address the ongoing rhetoric. We're gonna move on, stop, please, please.
I will not be silenced as a taxpayer in this town, Jean.
Justin, as I said, please, as I said at the very beginning of this meeting, this is a meeting of the Board of Selectmen to conduct its business and its agenda items. You had the first opportunity for public comment not six minutes ago. We are now moved on to correspondence. This is a special meeting, which by law, we have to conduct ourselves and stick to the agenda. Maybe you're not aware of that, but that's what we do and that's what we're going to do. If you speak out again, I'm gonna have Joyce drop you from the call, which I can do if you're gonna continue to be disruptive.
Jean, I have a question for you.
Am I clear, Justin? I'm gonna take your silence as a yes.
Jean, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Justin will be able to speak when this, when the streetscape comes up on the agenda, correct?
Yes, I will allow it and he's got a second opportunity to speak at the second set of public comment at the very end.
That's what he needs to know. Thank you.
Moving on to four point two, there was an email thread that went back and forth between Alyssa Potts and myself regarding communications, the streetscape communications. Alyssa was not happy with the progress that I had made and just to be frank and honest, this freight train has become, um, it consumes a large amount of my day and there are a lot of things that are changing and moving and I'm doing the best I can. I apologize that I didn't get it out when I said I would get it out, but we will pick up the rhythm of, they should be coming out every Friday mornings after that Thursday construction meeting. Moving on to four point three, there was a letter from the Siting Council regarding Verizon Wireless wanting to do some modifications of an existing, on the existing tower at Bull's Bridge. That was, I think, last month or two months ago. This is the Siting Council granting those modifications. Basically, they're swapping out some antennas. They're updating, you know, their, their technology. I'm moving on to number five, tax refunds. Joyce, are there ta, any tax refunds this month?
Yes, it's in the folder. There's one.
I don't see it.
It's one for sixty dollars?
It, it was not in the folder.
Oh, yeah, I don't see it. I pause it. We, we can hold it till the next meeting then.
Was it for sixty dollars flat?
Yes.
So I, I will make a motion that we accept one tax refund for the, for a total of sixty dollars. I just need a second. I do recall signing it. I missed correspondence from Chris.
Should, even if it's only one for sixty dollars, shouldn't Rufus and I see this before we agree to this?
Yes, I think we should have.
Okay, I'll resend my motion. So we'll put it in the folder for the next meeting.
Yep, that's fine.
Um. Sorry, there were items put in the folder that are under correspondence that were not detailed out. So give me a second to catch up here. So there was an email dated Saturday, August twentieth, titled Further Concerns About The Sidewalk Construction, Kent, Connecticut, from Justin Money. And those were all addressed in a response today that I believe was sent out to the entire board. Justin, if you, and I just sent you maybe half an hour ago, you were looking for another document. If you had any comment on that email.
You know, I haven't had time to review those. They were not sent to me in a timely manner.
Well, you sent the email on Saturday, August twentieth at six forty-five AM and we got it back to you this afternoon. So I, I apologize, will by all means, take time to read it. Um, let's see. There was an email from Mike Gobble, which was a response to my project update email. And there was one from Chris Harrington that was about a concerned citizen asking about the marble con, the marble curbing was set and concrete for the sidewalks poured on Bridge Street. This means no inspections were done. This one was also responded. We had a response back from Mike Doherty. Give me a second, I will find it. So the email had to do with inspections done by SLR under the contract. He asked questions, do we get a reduction in the premium? We are paying since the inspections were not done there. Hopefully we'll not have any issues in the near future with that portion of sidewalk. Is there any recourse for the town if we do have issues in the near future? And Mike Doherty responded back and I forwarded that out to the committee. Sorry, a lot of emails, trying to find all of them for everybody. Sorry. First now my email's frozen. Sorry, I'll have to wait a second. Alright, let's try this again.
So Jean, you're, you're looking for an email from Mike Doherty to Chris Harrington, responding to that? Okay.
Yes.
Which, which didn't make the, the drive, okay?
Correct. I found it. I spoke with Mike Doherty from SLR. SLR Consulting has been onsite full time for all concrete sidewalk pours. There was a limited section of granite curbing installed on Bridge Street without an inspector on site. The sections were subsequently visually inspected prior to any backfilling and minor concerns addressed with the contractor. I wrote that our, I'm sorry, he wrote our contract with SLR is for a, a specific amount and is only billed for time when SLR has staff on site performing work related to construction inspection. We won't end up necessarily paying the con, the total number that's in the contract. It's sort of a not to exceed. And, and just followed up with, you know, SLR has been here since the beginning with us. It's, I don't know, Mike, how long have you been involved with this project? Thirteen or fourteen, eleven some odd, a long time.
Going on, yeah, ten to fourteen, I think.
Yeah, they, so they, you know, they have a, you know, they've invested time in this project with us. They have a very, they're highly regarded in the state and, you know, they've done tons of projects, including Salisbury was their most recent one. So that's the, the follow-up on that email. I think I covered them all. Um, we don't have a treasurer's report under moving on to seven new business, accept and possibly act on the recommendation from the streetscape committee request change order to include cradling the curbing in concrete. So I feel like we covered that under correspondence. The streetscape committee did make a recommendation for this change order, but we heard back through SLR from DOT directly that said that's does not meet the state standard. Mike and Mike, anything further on that? Seven point one?
Me? I have, I can say more now? Are we on the streetscape now?
We're, we're talking about the, the recommendation that you made to the Board of Selectmen.
Well, again, it's already been spoken of and I would, I would like someone to produce because I'm looking at the state of Connecticut specs and it doesn't say anything about not using concrete. So I'd like someone to show me where it doesn't allow it, that's all. Somehow, it doesn't have to happen right now. I'd like to see it, that's all.
Yeah, I have a note to forward you the email thread from the DOT.
But I, no, there's gotta be a DOT spec, spec somewhere written, not just what's one person says they will or accept or won't accept. I wanna see it.
Right, but it's not.
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking at the state specs here and it doesn't say anything about not using concrete.
Mike, if the state agents, he puts it in writing.
Okay, whatever, whatever.
We have to.
We've got, we've got a lot more to discuss. So we've got a few more issues when it comes to the streetscape thing. There's nothing we can do about the cradle. This is what Mike was told, so that's what we have to accept.
Seven point two, accept and act on the recommendation from the PNZ Inland Wetlands Hiring Subcommittee to hire the new land use administrator. If anybody's on, off of mute, please, if you could just remember to mute. Thank you. Hi Lynn, I see you're on. I'm gonna switch up the deck chairs here.
And Wes is also here along with Donna Hayes. And I think Alice.
Okay. Are you the chair of the subcommittee?
I, well, I chaired that, that meeting, yeah. Okay. We went through a process and interviewed two candidates and made the decision to hire Todd and the resolution's in front of you, I think?
Yeah, it's in our folder.
Okay. Do you have any questions on it?
Um, I, go ahead Rufus and, and Glenn, sorry, I don't mean to monopolize the conversation here.
I have a question, unless Rufus, you do first?
No, go ahead, Glenn.
Yeah, I know, I read, I read the recommendation here and, and yeah, I mean, based on a thirty-five hour week. And I looked in the, I looked in the, in the budget that we passed and and it has, it has in the blurb, in the, in those two boxes for both P and Z and inland wetlands. It has, it has the combined salary for both. It says eighty-two thousand, actually, a little bit higher and, and said, all of this is based on a forty-hour week. So, so I guess my question is, has something changed from what was agreed on in the budget from forty to thirty-five or, or is that a high end in the budget or what's the impetus for that?
Yeah, well, we averaged for the budget, the number of hours that Donna typically works. For the town full time is thirty-five hours a week, I guess, plus. Donna, I don't know if you had anything else in mind?
Yeah, I had, I had requested that, that all, when the salary was agreed upon at eighty-two, I went to the Board of Finance and said, but I'm not asking for that eighty-two for me. I'm asking for the four percent like everybody else got, even though we wanted six. And I did not want the hours to be changed either. So there is a question about whether or not that was ever made a motion on. Part of it was, the motion was made or part of it was agreed upon where, even though there were no motions, I'm still not getting the eighty-two and, and that's fine, I don't care. But I don't know that. But I don't know that the new person will be working forty hours. She will be required to work thirty, thirty five. I've been working forty. So it would be the eighty one based on thirty five, which is what the job description for this position says.
And then with the Casio certification, it would go up to eighty two.
Yep, I saw that, I saw that, thank you, no, thank you both.
I have no questions.
Um, I, I guess I have. Just a couple of questions, if it was. And I was just looking at the budgeted payroll, it says twenty six hours a week for land use administrator and fourteen hours per week. For inland wetlands, so that, that equals forty. I guess if the assumption that the board went under when they passed the. The budget was that it was for forty hours, now we're. Kind of arbitrarily changing it to thirty five hours, which means increasing the. The hourly, you know, what comes out to be an hourly rate.
It was never officially changed to forty, it's always been thirty five.
However, Donna has, in this position, Donna has been working over forty hours a week regularly. But she's also been working without a clerk for quite some time as well, so. Our feeling was, you know, full time work for town, the town hall is thirty five hours a week. And that's what we included in the resolution. On the assumption that we will get a. You know, assistant in there doing some of the admin and the other. Aspects of the job that Donna has done one hundred percent of for many, 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 many months.
Donna, do you have set office hours, the total thirty five or do you, how, how does your?
My office is open Monday through Thursday, definitely from nine until four.
Okay.
Tuesday, Friday, sometimes I leave at twelve or I leave at two, depending on whether or not I've had one meeting or two meetings during the week. If I haven't had meetings, then I'm here until four o'clock.
Well, you also do site visits, right?
Right, yeah, so, right, exactly, so, you know, if you come in, my office might have a sign on the door that says out for a sidewalk, like I've got one Thursday morning at eight o'clock.
We also do site visits with the commissions on weekends and after hours.
So I. I think that this is. A non-issue, I mean, you're hiring somebody to do a job. You have certain hours. And then there are going to be certain hours where you're not in the office or you're covering meetings. They're either going to be able to get the job done, or they may have to spend some weeks where they spend more hours to get the job done, so. Seems to me we agreed on. The. A competitive salary to get somebody in and. That's what we've done.
Right.
You know, you start, start arguing over minutes and hours, you're gonna drive people away.
Yep, right, but we also have to consider what we. What we budgeted for and it looks like we budgeted for forty. And if that's going to be a change, then we need.
Now we budgeted eighty two thousand dollars, that's what we budgeted.
And when Barbara budget, when Barbara does the payroll, creates the payroll piece of the budget. She creates a, basically a spreadsheet that. That takes each position to what the budgeted number of hours is and for those two positions, it equals forty hours.
If you look at Barbara's budgeted sheet, I'm sure that her information will still say thirty five hours.
Um, I have it and it says forty, that's sort of why I'm bringing it up.
I'm not talking about the budget sheet, I'm talking about the separate sheet that she has with all the employees and all the hours that she. That they work and, and I agree with Rufus, you know, I've worked forty hours consistently over the past year and a half. And I can prove that by showing you the time sheets that I take out. There, I do not believe at this point in time that it's going to be necessary for the new person to work forty hours. Because she will be able to hire an assistant.
However, if she, if she needs to. I was just gonna say, if she needs to, we expect it. This is a, you know, professional position that doesn't really, it's not really defined by nine to five, no one's punching a clock. People are meeting with the public, this person is going to be meeting with the public after hours, you know, it's. What we're trying to do is get a good professional in town to represent town, be the face of town. With all people in town and outside of town who come into the land use office and try to, you know, need help figuring out what the heck they're supposed to do. And then we, and we need a professional, we need someone who can hit the ground running. And we believe we found that.
It's an exempt position.
Yeah.
And working for the job as well.
I, yes, I understand that. You know, as part of the process that's, that we have Lynn, I, I, it's important that we. Just make sure we're having these full conversations. I do have concern that we've taken a forty hour position and turned it into a thirty five hour position on, and that's on paper. And believe me, I know that the, my job is apparently a thirty hour position. I have never worked thirty hours a week. So I completely understand a salaried position and the, you know, the trade off that you have when you take a salaried professional level position. I just need to make sure that we're going through the complete process. Also, part of our process is that the department head is supposed to notify the board of selectmen in writing of a vacancy. And so Donna, we do need that letter of resignation so we can have it on file. So we do know when your last date of work will be and how that transition will go. And so we do need to, to get that buttoned up.
Donna, you'll do that, right?
Oh, yeah.
So are we, um, do we feel like we're ready to entertain a motion? Do we want a little bit more information?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Go for it.
Well, the recommendation is the same one that. Town of Kent hires, this is Tay Kern as the land use administrator effective on or about September sixth, two thousand twenty two. Based on a thirty five hour work week with an annual salary of eighty one thousand and an additional immediate increase of a thousand per year. Upon successful achievement of the CAZEO certification. This increase is in addition to any budgeted subsequent salary increases.
That's it, that's the motion?
That's the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Are we, any further questions? And did Ty say that she could start on September sixth? And do you have any kind of transition as far as how long? You two will spend together to, to sort of make that transition?
Not right now.
Okay. Ready? All those in favor, oh Glenn, did you have another question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, when was, when was Miss Kern here in Kent?
Twenty?
Twenty twenty?
I think she left in March, May of twenty twenty?
Okay, so quite reasonable, okay.
Twenty one.
Twenty one.
Oh, sorry, I thought it was. At the beginning of the pandemic. It's all sort of smudged together.
And she's been at the town of Southbury since then?
Yeah.
Okay, so she has much familiarity with the town of Kent?
Yes.
Okay.
Ready, ready to vote?
Yes.
All those in favor?
I.
I. Thanks Lynn, thanks everybody.
Thank you.
Read through the deck chairs here. Old Business Board of Ed request for school resource officer update. So just to give a, a brief update. The Board of Ed came to the Board of Finance last Wednesday night with a. A request, is Scott on, sorry? Scott Trabuco, looking for him quick.
I don't see him.
He was planning to hop on, so. There's a, a statute that allows for, if the Board of Ed has a surplus from their budget. That would be going back to the general fund, that they can make a request to the Board of Finance to have up to two percent of that budget, of that number. Set aside, I'm sorry, up to two percent of their total budget of the supplemental funding set aside for a special project. And. Scott worked with Barbara. On that. That request, so what the Board of Ed came to the Board of Finance with was a request to authorize. Up, authorize a hundred and forty three thousand, which is the cap, to be basically put towards that initial year of that school resource officer. There is a lot of discussion and conversation at the Board of Finance meeting, but in the end, they did not move a motion forward. They made, there was a motion made, but it didn't get seconded, so they didn't pass that motion. So. We have to go, I had a conversation with Randy this afternoon about where, how do we? Do we have to reword the motion for the hearing and subsequent referendum? He would like to have a conference call with myself and Barb Herps tomorrow, because Barbara's not in today. So we'll be doing that tomorrow and I'll get back to the board as to if it's gotta be two different questions, if it can still be one question, because. What initially we were talking about today was that we're, we're still making a request to, for a supplemental. Appropriation of the budget. So he's leaning towards that it still would be that same question, the question is not really changing. So, but we'll, we'll get back to you on that. I did have a couple of conversations with Lieutenant Pearson, who is the supervisor at Troopell. He oversees all of the troopers. At Troopell. And is also the point of contact for that SRO program. So a number of questions were answered. And it'll be all wrapped up into part of the presentation, but some things that were answered were what happens to. The, that SRO trooper, we'll just call them for the moment. If, if there's a snow day, so if that, if it was a Tuesday and there was a snow day, that SRO trooper would be. Would basically revert back to that second trooper for us in town. And if anybody knows how busy Andrew is on the day of any snowstorm. That will be a big bonus for us to have a second trooper to be able to handle the numerous, numerous number of. Requests for service that we get during those snowstorms. Another question that came up was how many? How many requests for service does Andrew have over the course of a year? And the lieutenant was able to get that, for me, it's approximately two thousand requests for service annually. That Andrew does in the town. So when you think of, you know, what you see Andrew doing or responding to a motor vehicle crash or, you know, car break ins when we send things out. Through the listserv, that's just a tiny, tiny drop in the bucket of all of the requests for service that come in to the town. So that was another big question. Would we be able to work with the, that SRO resident state trooper from a planning perspective? So having that SRO who's got special training. During the planning process, so there's been a, a pretty big gap since Sandy Hook that many fire EMS organizations in the state have wanted. To fill and that comes in that cooperative planning between law and for the three legs of the public safety stool, I like to say. So fire EMS and law enforcement, and yes, that person would be. Would be engaging with law, with fire and EMS for that planning of, you know, active shooter incidents. The school plans, the school safety plans, so there would be additional involvement from the SRO for that. There are also questions about what else would the, that trooper be doing during the course of that? School day, there's a new sort of rewritten, reimagined dare program that's come out, they would be implementing that at the school. A big piece of what they're doing is school security, school safety. Re, reaffirming the school safety plan that all the teachers have to live and breathe by. Checking the perimeter, having situational awareness of what's going on on the campus. But also creating, doing that community policing within the school, which is. Meeting kids, creating a rapport with kids, creating a rapport and a, you know, positive relationship with, with the kids at Kent Center School. So that they can better identify if there are kids in crisis, working obviously with the rest of the, the leadership and administration at the school. So it's very much a multi-pronged approach. It's not just being the car, you know, sitting in the car. Definitely is not gonna, there's gonna be very little sitting in the car, other than probably than brakes, but. So those were some of the questions, there were other questions about. Why, you know, why pay so much for a school resource officer when we could, you know, reportedly hire a school security officer? Some of the. Some of the, sorry, some of the questions, some of the answers to those are what, basically what we get when we. Contract with the state police is we are, and this was from the lieutenant, we're part of the largest police department in the state. Meaning the Connecticut State Police and have immediate access to all of their resources and assets. A school safety officer would not be within that state police system, so they would have to. If there were a situation, they would have to activate nine one one, just like any other citizen who. Um, if there were a situation, they would have to activate nine-one-one, just like any other citizen who. Um, came upon a crime or came upon a, you know, suspicious um, scenario. So um. That's a, you know, having that direct communications right to the troop and to, you know, the rest of the state police, that's, that's a pretty big deal. This school security officer would not have arrest powers because they are not a sworn police officer. There's a number of of other um, big infrastructure things. We. We don't have a police department in our town. If we were to take this, the root of the school safety officer. That would mean the town. And the Board of Ed would be um. They would, they would be responsible. We would be responsible for creating policies and procedures to um. That guide that employee, which is a very specialized employee. It's not like you could just hand them our employee manual and say, live and breathe by this. Um, they would, we would have to be funding a weapon and ammunition and a backup weapon. Um, we would have to be also able to store that weapon. Their technology that they have body worn cameras, their what's called an MDT, which is a basically a tough book computer that they would have. For their um, reports that they would have to do and research and any background checks. Um, that would all all have to be purchased and managed. Um, just the body worn camera has across the state become a huge, huge problem. Because you're talking about tens of terabytes of data that we have to securely. Store for a certain amount of time. It's all based on um, recent um, public acts that were passed and. That was one of the things that I spoke with another first selectman and she said that was one of the, one of the pinch points for them was having to deal with and manage all this data. And not only do you have to have it and manage, you know, um, collect it and manage it, but you also have to make it available for um, FOI requests. So it's. That alone is extremely cumbersome and extremely complex. Um, we would also have to get. Um, a vehicle and make sure that obviously that vehicle is maintained. So there's, there's a number of other costs, you know, the, the sort of. The curbside cost of hundred and eighty-seven to at the max two hundred thousand. The lieutenant told me that the contract price is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand for the year. So. I'm for sake of discussion, it would be lower because we would, it would be prorated because we're not doing a full year this year. But um. What, we get a huge turnkey customized service for what we pay for. Um. If we were to go the school security officer route, we're, we're taking on all of the administration, all of the um. We have to figure out how to get that person trained. We would, they have to have weapons recertification. I think they do it twice a year for the CSP. So we would now have to create a contract with, with somewhere that does weapon certifications for. Um, public safety officers. So it's, it's a heavy lift to do a school security officer. Um, it can be done certainly, but it's. It's a a completely sort of different kettle of fish when it comes to, in comparison to rather um. The, the turnkey, um, what we get. Um, and this person is also trained the same way that all the other officers are trained. They're going to be trained. The same way that our resident state trooper is going to be trained. If you get a retired police officer, they don't necessarily have post-training. They may have some other different law enforcement training. So there's a number of. Pieces and parts that um. That have lot of added value when it comes to doing the school resource officer versus the school security officer. Um, there are two schools in the area that are actually doing away with. Um, the sort of constable option, school security officer and taking on a a second trooper as their SRO. So.
Which schools are doing that, Jean?
I'm sorry?
Which schools are doing that?
Um, Litchfield. There was a second one. Talked to so many people. I'd have to get the the second one. It might be, now it's New Milford is, is not because obviously they have their own. You know, full police force. Um, I'd have to check back.
And do you know, do you know why Litchfield is doing away with the the SSO?
A lot of it. Um, so it's a management issue, but also not a management issue. It's, it's. Managing the, the process and all of the infrastructure, um, data, the data collection and and um. Of the body worn cameras is also, has also been another factor.
There's certainly a lot of, a lot of work as you've just outlined uh, for that, for that option. Uh, is there, is there a um, I mean, do you have an idea of 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 funding for an SSO? Uh, as opposed to um, S SRO?
Would still be through an appropriation of the um. For the town, of the town budget.
It would, yeah, it would, it would do that. But but any idea what that might be?
I've. I've heard everything from the sixty-six to ninety-two, but that's just for the person that is with nothing else. Um. So I. I don't know. I, you know, it would take quite a bit to create a complete budget. That would be. That would be a lot to create a complete budget. Um.
But just to give, ju- just to give the uh, town of Kent, you know, the people an idea of of what that might be. Uh, because you know, I, I, I saw that uh, that Board of Finance meeting uh, today and uh. You know, that came up a little bit, you know, what other avenues uh, could be explored should the town not want to go uh, in this direction. Um, and um. You know, so I, I, I think the town should explore this uh, this SRO. Uh, I, I, I think um. I think from the Board of Ed perspective and from uh, you know, from the noise and traffic perspective, from people who who believe that perhaps there should be more. Uh, monitoring on weekends uh, in in the summertime in particular. Um, I think I said that from the start. Uh, but uh, but should, but should the town think that this is just too much? Too much funding uh, at this time. Um, I, I would love to. I would love to give people, um, you know, an idea of what and what an alternative might be with an SSO. Or or even a constable of a program on uh, you know, on the weekends. Uh, I was, I was looking at a few other towns, looking at the budgets um, to see um, you know, a retired police officer who can come and be a constable. I think Litchfield has that, doing away with that for this reason. Um, but I think all of this, uh, once this comes to, I think we're still thinking of bringing this to a informational town meeting at some point.
Yeah, I need to talk to Randy just to.
Okay.
Flesh out that whole, the motion um.
Yep.
And that's good. If that has to change.
But but just to say to this body that the more information that we can bring to that town meeting, the better I think it is for everybody. Um, so um.
Yeah, and um.
Really agree to write that.
Scott and I have been and the Region One Superintendent and Michelle Mott, we've been exchanging. Sort of just brainstorming about. You know, pulling together all that information for the hearing to make sure that we have it. Um, to share with the public, you know, PowerPoint presentation style.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, we need an exhaustive amount of information for folks. So uh. Great.
I agree. More. The more facts. Presented. The better the vote.
So Jean, what do you think of a timeframe? You you'll talk to Randy and then the next regular meeting, you'll bring this up to us?
Um. Yeah, I mean, the timing is right for um, you know, our next uh, monthly meeting or bi-monthly meeting or two times a monthly monthly meeting. Um, is the first, so it's only, you know. A week and three days.
Yep.
So I. I, that's gonna give me plenty of time to have a couple of conversations with Randy and make sure that we have everything. You know, written properly if we need to reapprove or change something. Um, on that hearing and then we can hopefully come back with some dates for hearing and referendum.
So on Thursday, September first, we could, we could start to think about dates uh, thereafter.
Yeah.
Right.
And so the um, whatever we date pick, we shoot, sorry, whatever date we pick for the hearing. The and Darlene, just jump in here. The referendum has to be done within two weeks, correct, of that informational hearing, Dar?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's.
It's tied to, it's gonna be tied to that public hearing, which is gonna be a town meeting adjourned.
Right.
Okay.
Good folks, it's my gobble. I can't raise my hand, but can I ask a couple of questions? Please?
Um. Yeah, if we keep it finite.
Okay, number one. Um, I thought, did you say two percent of their, of their surplus?
Up to two percent of their budget. So let's say.
Oh, yes. Okay.
You got, you got that.
Yeah, and their budget is four point nine. So, so two percent of four point nine is not a hundred and forty-five thousand, is it?
Um, I would have to go and look at their budget, but the number that was requested was a hundred and forty-three thousand, which. Was getting indicated that that was the cap, actually.
But if they're, I, I'm pretty sure four point nine was their budget, but if, if that's correct, then ninety-eight thousand is two percent of that, not a hundred and forty-five.
Well, I, I'd have to double check with.
Okay, that just.
But.
That's question one. Question two, uh, the referendum, does that, does that mean it will go to a town vote?
Yes, that's what a referendum would be.
Okay, thank, thank you. That's it.
Valid. Um.
Yep, thank you.
Yep. Alrighty. So moving on to COVID nineteen pandemic update, we don't have a lot other than what's really been in the news. Um, we keep. On paper from, from Health Department, our numbers. Are not bad, but. Um, again, that's because the, all of the home kits, we've handed out probably half the home, the second order of home kits that we got. Um, and those are not reported to DPH. So that data is. Not at all in the um, in the state data that you see. Um, just continue, you know, people should continue to be careful. Um, we're monitoring, monitoring the monkeypox situation. Um, and just flexing as it comes. So the um, for the two job descriptions, those have both gone to Demis just for a review from them. To make sure that there's, you know, that we have everything that is required to be in there. On the EV charging station, I'm waiting here to hear back from Eversource. And the flag policy has fallen through the cracks, but I'll pull it back out. Um, Main Street.
I'm sorry, Jean, with the flag policy. So you were, you were gonna talk to Randy about um, about the memorial, right? The veteran.
Yeah, he said it, it didn't matter.
Okay.
And then that was at the point where it fell through the cracks. Sorry. Um, the mainstream noise and traffic, I got an email, I'm sorry, a phone call from somebody at the DOT. Um. Asking just for some basic information, but what my takeaway was, was that. That sort, that point of contact at DOT that contacted me about a month ago. Um, they've sent it out to all the units and now the units are starting to ask for a little bit of information. I'll, I'll touch base with um, the folks, my single point of contact at the DOT, just to see if they have any sort of um. Headway on where we might be. Going with this.
They, they, they know, they know of the uh, the noise and traffic report that was sent to this group. I mean.
Oh, that's what this is all based on. Yeah.
Okay, okay, so they do.
I spoke with somebody um, who finally, I finally got a human. Um. And they said, this is something that is, has to go out to all of the units that it's affecting. So the chain of command and DOT is very big. Because it's a very big state agency and they said it could be four to five months. Um, but it would definitely be a month before they hear back, before we hear back, no matter what.
Four to five months?
Yes. I was expecting that.
From, from now or from two months ago?
From two months ago.
Okay.
Um, but we're really on their schedule. I will send. The point of contact a little nudge after this meeting just to check in. Um, and if there's something to report back, I will.
Thanks.
The um, oh shoot, the. Um, sorry, eight point eight policy and procedure manual. I've been in contact with Mike Rose from Rose Kalor, who is um, the. Um, employment. Um, specialist that Kerma allows us to have one free hour of, he's basically a labor attorney. Um, and Randy recommended that I continue to be in contact with him. On a number of things, including this policy and procedure manual. So we're going, he has it and um, will probably. Be getting a number from them to let us know what the cost may be to um, take us through a review of that manual. Um, so hopefully I'll have something for you next week.
How long might that take? I mean, what, any timeframe of?
I didn't get one. We didn't really talk about timeframe.
Okay.
Um, the Community Resilience Building Workshop Summary. Of findings report. Um, I did go back and forth with the Nature Conservancy. They sent me back. Um, with the corrections. I will put it in the folder for next week's um, meeting, so we can wrap that up. I have nothing for the salary review.
I'm sorry, Jean, if we can go back to that for a second. So the uh, so that, that resiliency um, piece, I, I have it here. Um, I would love to, at the next meeting, um, if we, if we talk about the job descriptions for um, the emergency management. There, there's some, there's some sound. Uh, yeah, one of the priority actions uh, in the um. In the Community Resilience Building Workshop findings was establish emergency management as a formal department within the town's municipal structure, coupled with creating a permanent, full-time paid emergency management position. That's a mouthful. That's a lot. Um, and I would like to actually talk about that in detail. Doesn't have to be this moment. Um, but um, but that's, that's a big deal. And uh, I think we need to talk about that.
And so these are, that report. You know, a lot of that report is the hazard mitigation plan. Um, those, those findings are. High level. Um, you know, it's this, that document is not a plan of action. It's not um. You know, it's not a planning or operational document. It's a really, really high level. Sort of wish list in, in many cases, but that said, um, will, we can certainly spend some time focusing on that. And um, we'll get you that revised document out.
Yeah, I mean, just, just to say that we're, we're, we're considering, you know, an SRO for the town, which is a huge. Funding expense. And then, of course, we have this statement, um, which is massive. So um, so I think we have to be really careful about what's in this report regarding this.
Sure. Um. Eight point ten. I don't have anything on that. Um. I can, when Mike Rose calls me back, I can see if I can get some. Some information from him on the um, you know, what other towns do. Oh, and I still owe you the. Um, the cog. Last salary.
Yeah, if we can get that cog um, salary, um, because I've, I've been doing this kind of on my own, looking at, at, at budgets, but uh, I love to cross-reference with what the cog has.
Okay.
Talk about this.
Um. Eight point eleven, streetscape update. Mike.
Well, hello. How are you?
Hi.
Um, I'm going to, you know, as a committee. Um, Justin Money has expressed um, several concerns that I agree with. So I've asked Justin to join this meeting to, to show the Board of Selectmen and anyone else watching. These concerns, which um, we, we agree with one hundred percent. And then after Justin's done, I would love to speak again.
Hey, Mike, what's your um, identifier on your Zoom?
I'm Ja- I'm under Jack Nelson because.
Oh, okay.
I don't have the internet. And this is why I would really love to have these meetings at the Town Hall. Because I have to bug people to go with, to their place to have these meetings on Zoom. So if you don't mind, I would please like to let Justin. Speak and, and show us his presentation.
Alrighty.
My name is uh, Justin Money. I've been a stonemason in Kent for approximately twenty-five years. I'm familiar with this, the type of sidewalk construction that has been done in town. And I have the following concerns about the quality of the construction. As soon as this project started. I uh, contacted Mike Gao. As soon as this project started, I, uh, contacted Mike Gao, who was the chairperson of the sidewalk renovation committee. And I've sent out two emails to the board of selectmen and various other people voicing my concerns. I've had very little feedback from anybody about how these concerns have been addressed. But I do understand that the general public doesn't have a very in-depth grasp of the construction techniques um, and the various design issues. So if I could ask for five minutes of your time to explain to you how it's been constructed and what I think is going wrong, I'd very much appreciate that.
So. Justin, I, I, I do want to just make sure that, um, we're, we're being fair to the engineer, so I'm gonna have the engineer be part of this discussion as well.
Okay.
Well, is, is the engineer here?
Yeah.
Engineer, the engineer that is supposed to be on site, is he here?
No, I'm not talking about the inspector. I'm talking about the design engineer, the, our primary point of contact at.
My sister on the call, so.
Yeah.
Justin, you're up.
All right, so I've done up this sketch here to show you what has been done to date in terms of the design. Here you have the road. Here you have the concrete sidewalk. Here you have the granite curb. Underneath the granite curb, you have processed gravel. And there is processed gravel also under the sidewalk. And here and here, you have concrete blobs only where the curbing pieces join. All right? And these are the pro, the problems that I have with this design. And its installation. First of all, the process gravel that is both under the curbing and under the sidewalk has not been compacted properly. So the material comes loose, it's got a lot of air in it. It ought to be put down in two to three inch lifts, that's like two to three inches at a time, dampened and compacted. Instead, what I've observed is that it is put down in one lift of twelve inches and the compactor is run over the top. Now, if you were to walk on that, it would feel extremely firm underfoot. But if you were to dig down a little bit, you would find that further down here, it is all loose and fluffy and dusty. The same has happened under the sidewalk. They've then raised this again in one left. And they've compacted the top and underneath here, it's still all loose and fluffy. Now, what's gonna happen when this gets saturated with water? Down here, when this is saturated, probably by early spring, is it's gonna sink. Now, because there is more processed gravel under the sidewalk than under the curb, if this were to sink by ten percent, this would sink a little over an inch. And this would sink a little over two inches. So what you're gonna see, I would suspect by next spring, that this sidewalk here has sunken a little bit below the level of the curbing because the compaction hasn't been done correctly. Now, it is quite hard to demonstrate or prove, you know, with photographs and so on, that is, this isn't done right. I would need to have set up a video camera then on, there on site for you to see, but that is the most important structural error that they're making. Secondly, and Mike, Mike talked about this, the concrete details are very inadequate. Really, the concrete shouldn't just be here and here, the concrete should be cradled under the curbing like this. So there's a minimum of three inches of concrete underneath. And so the concrete comes up the side, as far as the DOT will allow on the roadside, and about four to six inches on the inside. So all this here should be concrete. Instead, we're getting a blob of concrete about the size of a soccer ball only at the joints, which in my opinion is doing very, very little to support the granite curbing. Thirdly, the curbing dimensions are not what they ought to have been. If you go back to the original plans that were presented to the public for review, this dimension here was eighteen inches. And the material that they're installing is fifteen to seventeen inches. And quite a lot of it is just fifteen inches. So that means that the granite is gonna be sitting a lot shallower in the ground. And I suspect that the reason why the DOT is not happy with us putting concrete around, around it is because if that were to happen here, if we were to put concrete to support it like that, you would see that there's not enough space there for the required depth of asphalt. Other issues with the granite is it's an extremely irregular material. It's very, very poor quality curbing. If you walk down Bridge Street where you've installed it, you can see that at the bottom where it meets the road, it is really, really uneven. And if you look at the inside of the granite, you can see that it's really, really irregular here. You know, some, sometimes it like goes in like that and stuff. This is not a high-quality granite curve. Next thing I'm dissatisfied with is this interface between where they poured the concrete sidewalk and the granite curbing. Now, you will see that because the granite curbing is very irregular here, when they pour the concrete against it, the concrete edge is very irregular too. Now, what happens in the winter when this gets wet here and this freezes? It's heaving up. But it can't go up because this interface here is not regular enough. They're locked together. So the frost is gonna push this up and it's gonna cause this granite here, this concrete to crack and to spoil. And likewise, when it settles again in the late spring, it's gonna cause more cracking and spalling. What they should have done here is they should have put a bond breaker material in. That is a material here, it's usually five eighths of an inch wide, and it sits in like that between the grass and the concrete, ensuring that they're not mechanically adhering to each other. And that, that then allows the concrete to heave up and to resettle. And in the, uh, drawings that the public reviewed, this back of the granite here was sawn to make it flat and straight. The granite that we purchased, it's all messy and irregular here, so they cannot put in this bond breaker material, it just won't sit straight and flat there. So instead, what have they done? Anybody observe that?
Nobody. That's it.
They put in a piece of plastic sheeting. That's what they're calling the bond breaker material. Now, a piece of plastic sheeting is about one sixteenth of an inch wide. But the irregularity of this surface may be up to half an inch. So it is not sufficing to break that mechanical bond. Other issues I'd like to draw your attention to are, in the original drawing, what we thought we were getting was a rollover here. On the straight granite curbing, it was supposed to be a half inch radius. On the curved granite curbing, it was supposed to be a two inch radius. Let me draw that in. What we wanted was a nice curve like that on the edge, okay? Instead, what we have is a sharp point here. And they've gone over that sharp point with a grinder that's eased it ever so slightly. It's barely perceptible. It's called a buzz edge. And in my opinion, that is not sufficient to stop people that are parallel parking with the curb from bursting their tires. That's why it needs this roundover. It's not an aesthetic thing, it's a practical thing. Also, the top surface of the granite, that's the surface here, on the original drawings that were shown as flamed or thermal. At the moment, this is just sawn, it's extremely flat and it's extremely slippery when it's wet. It needs to be flamed or thermald, and that will give it the texture of sandpaper. And when pedestrians are walking over in the wet, they're not gonna slip and fall on it. And then lastly, on those sections where the curbing is curved, you can observe that outside the Morning Star on Bridge Street. The original drawings showed curved granite curbing. That means instead of a straight piece, you have a curved piece. What have they done? They haven't used curved granite curbing. They've used straight pieces of curbing and they've cut them down to really short sections to make a polygonal curve, which looks terrible. The pieces aren't as strong because they're so short, and I suspect they've saved a lot of money. So, I am a stonemason. I am not involved in your town politics. I don't know very many people in town hall. I found a number of other people that share my concerns. And I am anxious that you make this sidewalk project something we can all be proud of. Not just now, because it's finished by Thanksgiving, but proud of in three years' time, proud of in ten years' time, proud of in forty years' time. And from what I see.
I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up, Justin, you're.
I am wrapping it up.
Eight minutes in.
Even my experience, we are not getting a quality product. Thank you.
Okay, Jean, he was wrapping it up there. I, I think he made it clear that he was, um. Again, I'm, Jack Nelson and I are both in total agreement with, with Justin on this. Uh, there's not much else we could add to it. He's spoken pretty much everything that, that, uh, we have been concerned with as well. There's only one thing actually that he did miss. He did say that they are irregular in width. I've mentioned that during our meeting. I have pictures where two of the, two of them that are butted together are three quarters of an inch difference in width. Now, you can ask anybody who knows anything about concrete, when you have a corner, that is a cracking point. Or a likely cracking point. Anytime you have a corner cut into your concrete, it is generally a cracking point. And I can't even tell you how many of those there are in this curbing because it's ver, it varies in width tremendously. And I have a picture, I can't send it to you. Just one section in particular is three quarters of an inch in difference. That's the only thing I would add to what Justin had to say. And I think that this needs your attention. And, and I, I know, um, I'm sure Mike already has some things to say about it, and I'd like to, you know, give him his opportunity and, um, if there's any, you know, I might have something to add after that, if it's okay.
Mike, I'm just gonna, um, for some reason, I can't, all of a sudden can't spotlight people. Joyce, can you just check that? But, Mike, if you can just come off of mute.
Sure, um, I'm gonna be driving and I don't know what kind of reception I'm gonna be having here, so. I guess the first thing I would say is I did respond to Mr. Money's email um, that outlined the concerns he just went over. It may be easier, uh, to go through my responses, Jean, um, just because pretty sure I'm probably gonna lose reception for at least a few minutes.
I have his responses here in front of me, if you'd like me to read them.
Yeah, I was gonna put them on, um, screen share so that we.
And I can.
Read them.
I could, I can start, but.
Go ahead.
I know this section of, uh, the road always loses. Um, so just in regards to the details themselves, um, we did have, uh, a number of changes or not, a couple of changes that occurred. One of them being during the bid phase, the, uh, details in terms of some of the rounding over of the curb, the clean back. Um, we were not getting any granite suppliers actually providing any pricing for the job. Um, the streetscape committee was also aware of this. We went through, uh, a basically a change to the details so that we could entice the granite suppliers to actually bid on the job. They were basically saying they were too busy, they didn't need the work and that they would not perform the alterations to the curb as detailed. Um, and so every bidder that actually ended up bidding on the job at the time was saying nobody would, would give them a price. So we made those modifications in terms of some of the rounding over and the clean back, um, to actually get a product that would be good. Um, and those were coming from local New England granite suppliers. Once the bids were, uh, came in and we received Mather as the low bid, the local grant supplier in Otis, Mass, as well as New Hampshire, would not actually commit to supplying granite for the job. At that time, Mather submitted a alternative from North Carolina NC Granite, which did need the specifications in terms of.
Yeah, you're, you're starting to break up, Mike.
Jean, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So how come your committee were not made where?
As typical as some of the New England grant.
Hey, Mike, we missed about, we missed about ten or fifteen seconds of your, um, of what you're saying. Sorry.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, I, like I said, I think it's gonna go in and out until I get out of this section, probably another four or five miles.
Yep. I am almost there.
So, yeah, as I was saying, the, uh, the changes that occurred were one during the bid phase and then after the bid was awarded to Mather with the alternate, North Carolina supplied granite. Unfortunately, that granite does not meet all the design details. It did meet the structural qualities necessary for the granite curve.
Uh, Jean, can I ask a question?
Uh, I'm gonna let Mike keep going just so we can get through, um, the, what he to respond to your first initial number of questions.
Okay, I'll try to remember each one. Um, if I miss any, please use my email. So in terms of the detail in the state right of way in the use of granite or the use of concrete, um, again, our original details had con, more concrete around the curb. The state typical detail, standard detail, just shows that the joints of the two curves are butting each other. This is a detail we have.
Yeah, you're cutting out again, sorry. Just trying to get to that.
Well, maybe he'll call back.
Yeah.
No, it's a good question, please.
Hang on one sec. Hey, Mike, if you can hear us, we can't hear you. Hey, Mike, if you can hear us, we can't hear you. That may have, did he just drop off, Joyce?
Okay, so.
Yes. Okay, so he'll call back.
Can Justin or I go ahead and speak?
Um, yeah, I did wanna put the, um. The, um, email with the number of questions up on the, um.
I mean, he's, he's pretty much approached most of them, the, the, um. Couple of questions I have. Is number one. Our committee has never, once we've made our recommendation, there has not been one. Bit of, of. Uh, communication with us concerning these changes. Not once. Even, uh, we never heard of changing the granite. We never heard of. Anything about buying granite from North Carolina until after the fact. And I didn't even find that out from the selectmen. I found that out through the grapevine.
May I add that, Gene, you did not seem to be aware of the repercussions of using the North Carolina granite yourself.
Again, as I said on the phone, I am not a construction.
Well, isn't that why you had a committee to, a committee with, with seasoned, seasoned veteran construction people to recommend, make recommendations? Isn't that why we're, we were appointed and, and asked to volunteer our time?
Yes.
Rufus and, and Glenn, no offense, but is your construction experience. Um, do you know, do you have a lot of knowledge about, you know, prepping and, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but. You have a committee that was appointed and not just. Because it's a public committee, but because of our experience and knowledge. And, and. We weren't e- ever consulted or talked to or even was never mentioned to us. That you were making these changes with the granite, because we would have probably told you to wait until next year when you could get the proper materials. This, as Justin said, this, this granite is inferior. I mean, it is really not what. What we would expect. I mean, everyone knows. The sidewalks aren't what I dreamed they would be because of our differences in materials for the sidewalk, but. I'm over that. I, I just wanna see it done correctly. And I wanna see it done with proper materials and I wanna, and it just, justice. Justin was absolutely correct, you know, yes, the plastic does not allow the concrete to bond to the curbing. But with all the imperfections in the curbing and the concave spots and the convex spots, it is going to do damage. One last question that I have is. Since the, 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 um, contract was awarded. And they discovered that they weren't going to get the granite that we, that was specified. Did we get a difference? And did they drop the price? Because this granite is nowhere near as quality tha- that we were expecting.
No, we had a price increase.
Increase.
That, that is, my understanding is that because of the transportation costs. That was a big piece of the.
Well, I, I.
So, in our haste.
Disagree with that.
So I, I, I don't want us to, I don't want the sides of this box to flop out here, so if you could just talk one at a time.
Justin, go ahead.
So in our haste to get this done.
There was, there wasn't. You're, you're making accusations.
And we're getting a Dodge Neon and we're paying more than a BMW for the Dodge Neon.
Justin, you're, you're making some serious accusations. We. It was not done in haste. We had a signed contract. There was a, an issue with the materials. They sourced the materials elsewhere. Because they couldn't get the materials where they normally get the materials from. That I do know is a, a. You know, that happens with projects all the time.
Okay, but you, you. The, and the committee, no one was aware of the repercussions of using this inferior material.
When you. So it meets the state bids back.
Gene, it does not meet, the specification, even Mike Doherty said, the only specification that it met. According to our plans was the breaking, the, the strength. It did not meet any of the other specs, just the strength. Mike Doherty said it before, just a little while ago. So it, it, if that's the only thing that it met. Wasn't it kind of hasty to take it? At, at a higher price.
With, wi- without consulting people that actually know about this stuff. Like, I would have had an opinion on this. Mike would have had an opinion.
Right, and Justin, with, Justin, with all due respect, you're not a member of the committee, so we would never have reached out to you. But we do, you know, Rick. And Rick is also on the, your Streetscape Committee and. That was, you know, he's the subject matter expert that we were. I, we can't have a conversation if you're gonna overtalk me every single time.
Well, you were over talking, Justin, but go ahead. I promise I won't overtalk you again. Please carry on.
Rick was involved in the conversation with Mather, with SLR. He is. Thirty, forty, I don't even know how many years' experience with roadways, with sidewalks. Um, that was. That was where we, we were, we're at the space that we were at. If we were going to put this off for another two months. Then we would put it off to. Who knows when? Probably next summer. And is that what you're saying that we should have just scrapped the entire thing? We also had a contract that we signed with. A contractor. So I, not sure where. Where the conversation, where we're gonna end up on the conversation.
May I go now? May I speak now or you're done? Okay. Rick does not speak for our whole committee. I understand Rick's experience as the town foreman. I also have mentioned a thousand times the other experience that's on the committee. Our committee was never once consulted. So what is the sense of this committee? What is the sense in us spending our time volunteering? Rick gets paid, we don't. What is the spent, what, what is the sense in our volunteering our time and our expertise? To be, to fall on, on deaf ears?
I don't think it is falling on deaf ears. That's why we're having this discussion.
Okay. At, at this point, it's pretty much beyond, beyond help. Nobody, nobody in months has contacted me concerning any of the changes. Concerning any of, any part of this thing. The only time I get involved and when I stop and see things and I, when I ask or contact somebody. That's when I find out about it. Through the grapevine. Not once. Was, was, was our committee consulted.
Gene, it's Jack Nelson. I, I just wanted to ask, what was the, uh, change order, value of the change order for this? Add-on that they got for using the, uh.
I don't have it, I don't have it right in front of me. I think what we, what the board approved was, um, roughly $60,000. But I don't have the change order in front of me at this moment. Uh, Mike, I see you're back on. Do you have, um?
I, I just have one other comment. One thing I didn't understand is the, uh. I've been involved in a lot of projects over the years and. When you give a price, a firm price on a project, especially a public project and there's a bid bond. You're married to that price. You, you really can't come in afterwards and, and whine that you can't get the material. They should have had that lined up when they bid the job. And if they couldn't perform. You know, maybe the thing to do was keep their bid bond, which you were entitled to do, was 5%, was probably $85,000 or more. And you could have gone to the next highest bidder. And, you know, these are some of the things that we, we could have brought to the table and discussed with you.
Sorry, I'm just trying to find the, the change order. Mike, do you know what the change order total was?
I believe it was 67,000 and change.
So if we can just pick back up with you to talk about the change order and the, while you were out of range, there was. Discussion about the, um, the quality of the granite, that it's substandard quality and it. Doesn't meet the design specification, but does meet, um, the, and I don't know what the other term is.
Strength.
There was a term that Mike used before.
Uh, sure, so. I mean, it, it, it meets the specification. In regards to the strength, the ASTM testing. We highlight veining and, and quartz and, uh, some discoloration in, as well in our spec. It's an add-on to the state spec. Um, and so they were made aware that we weren't gonna be accepting those types of pieces. It's a different granite in terms of its look. And with that was brought to the attention of the town when we asked Mather to bring the sample in. Um, so we made, uh, everyone aware, um, at least that who we were speaking with. That there was a color differentiation, um, so it was a whiter color in terms of the granite itself. Usually, a lot of times, New England granite is the more gray color. Um, but in all facets, the stone itself meets the requirement. What I was saying is that the supplier. Would not or could not meet. Some of the design details. So I believe that's what Mike G is referring to.
So that, um. The corner was one of the things that we were talking about, the curved.
The rule. Well, didn't, didn't they know this?
Those were the, those, those were early on, so as I said, and I don't know if you heard me, because I can't see anything, um, but. As I said, during bidding, those were made, those changes were made, so the quarter inch. Buzzed edge, which is on the granite curb currently, that change was made during bidding. I, I don't recall every meeting, but I'm pretty sure the Streetscape Committee, we did have a meeting, we talked about needing to make those changes. Because we had to issue an addendum and extend the bidding, I believe, a couple of weeks. So the changes, so a number of changes to the actual design details, and I know Mr. Money has referred to a certain date on drawings. Um, but those were the original drawings. They were revised. A new date is placed in the revision block of that same sheet. The January date stays on, so it signifies that, that's the original date of the drawings and then it's superseded by the date that's added in the revision block. Um, again, that was done during bidding. Our understanding is the bidders received pricing from Swenson Granite and, uh, Williamstone. Those are two of the larger local grant suppliers. Once Mather was on board and working with us, they produced communications from Otis. Um, from Williamstone that they had said they will not be able to supply this project. And if they wanted to wait, I forget the number of months that they could then reevaluate and see if they could supply the granite. So that's when Mather submitted the alternative supplier. The sample was brought in, the, uh, spec sheet on the drawing was supplied. And the town, um, was given that information as well as the cost differential between. The originally bid price from Williamstone and the new price bid by NC Granite. That was supplied by Mather in a spreadsheet showing the difference in costs. Do you want me to go on, onto other issues or are we?
Yeah, let's, let's keep going with. Where, where you had left off. Basically, there were like four or five questions.
Okay, um, so in terms of the installation detail. The state standard is used on a significant amount of roadways. I've personally used it on projects. My company, SLR, has used it on hundreds of miles of road. It is a proven and, uh, used detail set on pro. With mortar only at the joints. So the one thing I'd like to avoid is if saying that's incorrect method. Um, of installing curb because that is not true. It may not be your preference or, or someone else's preference, but it is a, a industry standard. It is used on miles and miles of state roadway. Um, and is. Been in place for, for decades and longer in many places. We tried to get the, the cradle, the concrete cradle approved and that did not work. Um, it's not a personal preference of mine to, to have it one way or the other. Um, so again, we're. Trying to advocate on the town's behalf, the state, um, did not approve of that. And we'll have to supply that information to Mike and, and others as needed. The bond breaker material, the plastic will do the job of keeping the two surfaces from adhering to one another. I believe what Mr. Money is referring to at a five-eighths thickness, what it would, is what we would call an expansion joint. And that would not work on most granite curb, in particular, yes, this granite curb. Um, with an irregular black back that is not sawn or, or clean, um, which again, the supplier, um, was not gonna provide. The thermal top versus the sawn top, in my email response, I do, I'm not disagreeing, the thermal top. Is a preferred, um, method in a lot of places. Um, it does provide a greater slip resistance than the sawn top. That being said, there are many places, many streetscapes that also have sawn top curb. Um, it is used regularly, as is the thermal top. That was just an, another detail that was not provided by the NC Granite. If, one thing that Mr. Money brought up that is concerning, if there is curving being put in on a radius. That calls for a radius curving, that curving will be ripped out. Um, there is no chance that I'll allow them to be putting in segments of curb to make up a, a radius. So if that has happened, that will be corrected. If, uh, if someone could bring up any other points that I, I may be missing, I just, you know, can't recall them all.
I think you covered pretty much most of it, Mike. Now, if I may, and then I will conclude if it's okay with you. Okay, um.
Yes.
Number one, Mike, thank you because those straight pieces of curbing on the curb down by Morning Star really looked bad. And they need to be changed. Okay, thank you for that.
Um, no problem.
Concerning the bonding, um, Justin and I agree that the plastic will not allow the two to bond together. Our concern is the shifting. The smooth surface and the straight sur- surface allows them to shift separately, separately. And that's the concern, not the fact that they, the plastic, I mean, we know the plastic will not allow them to bond. Our concern is the inconsistency of the granite being convex and concave and jagged. Will, will not allow them to shift separately. Um, as for the, as for the thir- the, the thermal top, I'm, I'm gonna go back to the good old saying, safety first. That should not have been allowed to be changed. Because safety is safety. And that's been my issue from, everybody knows from. And that's been my issue from, everybody knows from day one, first and foremost. And I don't think. If we're, I don't think, well, if we are presenting this as incorrect as far as the betting goes. I think that we're trying to convey that it's less supportive and. And inferior to a concrete base. Okay, we we understand that it's correct. But to us, the better way is to cradle it in concrete. And I and I know you've been doing this for decades, Mike, and I and I don't mean you any disrespect at all. Given that fact, though, my my question to you. Is if it's not acceptable by the state. Why did the the original drawing show the concrete cradle?
So as I think you and I have talked, and I said this at the Streetscape meeting last or two weeks ago. Uh, that's again, I think the state had a chance to review these drawings, and they should have brought it up at the time. That they had them for however many months. Unfortunately, the state. Doesn't uh necessarily talk to each other, so we're dealing with the maintenance. Um, people at District Four during design. And once we're actually out there in construction, we're then dealing with the in the field inspector. Um, so that's why I I thought the concrete cradle, you know, we could go ahead with, that's why I prepared the detail. To move forward with it and at least get the pricing from the contract. Okay, so again, I can't answer for the state.
No, I understand what you're saying, my point is if it's been done before. Why couldn't that be used as as an argument to carry on with this project that way?
Well, so like I said, I have not done it before on a state job.
Oh.
So.
But it was it, but it was in the original drawings.
Right, well, we proposed it, and they, again, they didn't comment on it. Um, and it was a front and back, just so everyone's understanding, front and back to the curb, not underneath. And so, again, I I can't answer for the state, that's why I thought we had legs to stand on to say, well, all we're doing is adding it under, we have it front and back. Okay, unfortunately, they made the opinion that, no, we couldn't do it.
Well, I've spoken my piece. I don't know where we go from here, or where the Board of Selectmen go from here. I really don't see a need for this committee anymore. Cause I don't have time. To um voice an opinion that really means nothing.
I wouldn't, I I wouldn't say that it doesn't, that it means nothing. Where we appreciate your, the level of detail that you all are coming at this with. Rufus or Glenn?
Uh, can I say this, um? I I've learned a lot from uh from this meeting. Uh, and um from what people have talked about. Uh, as I walk around the streets here, uh and their concerns with the whole project. Um, yeah, I don't know much about granite, I don't, I don't know much about concrete either. What I do know. Is that we have a Mather Corporation. We have Mike Doherty at S L R. We have Mike and 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 your and Gobble and you and your Streetscape Committee. Um, we have Justin, right, Justin, you're not on that committee, I think, but a concerned citizen who knows a lot about this, and then we have us. On this uh committee, all I know. Really, is that all constituents should be communicating regularly and openly. And clearly, there has been some kind of breakdown in that. I'm not quite sure who or where or why, I I I'm really not as involved as as all the other constituents in this project. I I I'm on the Board of Selectmen, I'm hearing this, some of this, yeah, I got the emails, I'm hearing this now. But I do know that clearly, um. Uh, there's miscommunication somewhere. And if we can kind of solve that in part anyway, maybe we could. Forward more positively. That's really what I have to say, I mean, um. I don't know exactly what that means, but uh I think we need to communicate better.
I have one last request. Could the three of you please? Walk the sidewalks that are done. Please make an observation of what you see. Please walk the all the way to the bridge. Look at the seams, look at the, look at the curving. And then you you'll see what we're talking about.
And and you're right, I did that last night, um every every day, I actually go go around and see what's been done. Uh, and um and I did notice some of the things you talked about, I noticed the irregularities in the side of the of the granite curbing. Um, not that I know all about curbing in other towns and other places, um I don't look down as much when I'm in New York City and such. Uh, although I've been doing that more, um but you're right. Yeah, you're absolutely right, the three of us should actually walk these things and look around, and I'll be doing so right after this meeting. Thanks.
It would help me. To walk around with you, Mike, um. Because. Like you said, and I admit, I'm I have no, um. You know, give me, give me pieces of wood or. Roofing shingles, and I know what I'm doing, but concrete and whatnot is is beyond me, I. Did uh think about the layering and the compacting. Uh, that made a lot of sense to me, what Justin's point there, um and if that. Step has not been taken, um, you know, you, I I think. We are possibly. Stepping in the wrong direction towards an inferior product that we don't want.
So that was something that we didn't have Mike, um Mike Doherty speak to. The the Mike, the um the lifts and then the testing that you guys do.
Sure, so uh. Bringing up the point of the lifts, I think, was one of the first things Mike G um had done, maybe with Justin as well. And that was been addressed, we've told them, Mather, um that they cannot. Perform uh any backfilling with, you know, anything greater than, um I believe, a four-inch lift. So. To my knowledge, that has not continued to take place, um we also did go back and check the section. Um, of Bridge Street when we were not onsite. And the compaction testing came back averaging ninety-five percent. That's a nuclear density gauge that um sends a a pulse down through the stone or the pavement, whatever it's placed on. Um, so we are confident that we are getting a proper compaction in those areas. We will continue to do that, and we continue to watch them. But they have been instructed, our inspector has been made aware, uh that everything should be placed in lifts, compacted, and then, you know, continue.
Is there a possibility they could hook a hose to a hydrant to moisten it, because of course moisture would increase the compactability?
We can look into that.
Is that part, I'm so, I'm sorry, Mike, is that part of the problem with the compaction right now, because it is so dry? I mean, we got like five raindrops today, I think, but.
They can hit it with that plate all they want, and you can just walk over and and kick it, and it's just dust, it doesn't pack as well as it would with moisture.
Yeah.
And and everybody knows it's pretty darn dry right now.
So it's, it seems like of all the issues brought up, the compaction is the one that we probably have the more. Um, uh, you know, we we, I mean, we we can address that, um, the 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 con, the uh the granite itself. We that can't change at this point, right, we have that.
Well, I I I think I. I I would be willing to walk it with you, um, it would have to be like real early or later in the day, because I too have work to do. So if you want to name an an early evening or a real early morning, I'll be happy. Or even tomorrow, tomorrow evening, whatever you you name an evening or a morning, and I'll 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 walk it with you.
Okay.
I would like to do that. Um, what time is? I think sooner than. Um, after four. Um. Closer to five, five thirty, something like. That would, that would be fine.
I can do that.
Jean, you gonna join us?
Um, not not with um my colleagues, because I don't want to um. Have any perception of an illegal unwarranted meeting going on, so.
People need to.
I'll connect with you maybe on the weekend, Mike, I, it's.
Some other time.
Yeah, people need to.
Very, not to be too funny, it's just a very slippery slope.
Which evening would you like to get to be together?
Um, maybe for Friday, Thursday?
So you're gonna, so a separate meeting with you?
Yeah, I, the three of us should not meet with you, because that would be a meeting, that would be a a.
Okay.
An illegally, unwar- an illegal unwarranted.
Okay.
Meeting, which would get us into trouble with.
Thursday, Thursday, five thirty, Jean.
Can we um, can we follow up offline, I have sort of a crazy, um.
Rufus and Glenn, can you, can you do a time now and a day?
Uh, uh, why don't we, yeah, we have a bunch of stuff to go through, but Mike, they have your contact information, and you guys can. Have a huddle for which day and time.
Okay, unless you guys, you know, I don't want to hear a new, at three o'clock tomorrow, that they want to go at four o'clock tomorrow. Uh, I I'd like five thirty tomorrow. I'm good with that. Let's do five thirty tomorrow. Five thirty tomorrow.
I'll let, I'll let Rufus go with you first, I should probably do this separately, I think, right? Is it, is it, yeah, so uh.
It's an informal walkthrough, you don't want to.
Where you're gonna meet. Where do you want to meet? I don't care. How about we park at um what used to be Backcountry Outbitters?
You know what, let's, what, can you guys take it offline?
We're good.
Still so much to get through.
Good night, everybody, thank you.
Thanks. So I believe we are at eight point one two. Um, the Swift House ADA checklist, um John Worthington and I are gonna meet this week. And hopefully we'll have. Whether it's a number or prioritized list of what um. You know, sort of is rising to the top. Eight point one three, the Town Hall, uh large meeting room video conference. System, there's a update from Joyce in the folder, we're just. In a waiting mode for electrician, and then we'll. Hopefully be able to get the hardware and um.
Did they start this morning?
Joyce, did the. Electricians are there today.
Good, thank you.
So on to nine, under nine point one. ARPA Needs Assessment Committee. Glenn, are we ready to to discharge this committee with our profound thanks?
I think so, is is that the wish of the committee as well, um? Is uh did.
I haven't personally checked in with Connie on this.
Check with Connie, because she wanted to to keep it together just in case for a little bit until 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 something, I I don't know if she really wants to. Disband at this moment, um.
Okay, so they. Yeah, so they've met their charge, and it's, uh, you know, it's a subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen, so it's up to us to to um. To keep them in place or discharge them, but I will send out an email to Connie.
Yeah, ask Connie. And how and how is that going, uh, the, I mean, our ARPA funds, I mean, how's how's Barbara doing, has uh?
Um, well, so she has, and this. This disbursement report is from a few days ago. So this is, yeah, from probably mid last week, I want to say, she.
Jean, can I ask why we haven't seen this?
Um, because Barbara's not here at the meeting tonight.
But you've.
She would have reported on it.
We we should have seen, yeah, whether or not she was gonna report on it or not.
It it would have been in her treasures report. We want something different, we can ask her for something different, do you want a weekly report, do you want? Um, so she reported generally, if this was last. Week, she likely would have had a treasures report, I know she's very, very busy with end of year and audit. But if you would like this weekly or biweekly, we can have her. Give us a a report.
I would like to report, does not have to be weekly, but maybe biweekly. Just so that we have an idea.
So do you want it to coincide with both meetings? Would that be? Simple, and we can have it um as part of her treasurer.
Well, I would have expected a treasures report, whether she was coming to the meeting or not. I I think we should see those. At, you know, in our folder. Before our meetings.
If, normally she does, right, normally she does, um.
And so. I would think it would be easier for her to include. The disbursement update at the same time.
And it would have been in her treasures report, so for, as of midweek last week, she had dispersed um a look, uh fifty-three thousand five hundred dollars. And I will make sure that she gets something out um. To the board when she's in tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, Affordable Housing Plan Steering Committee, the draft is um currently out uh for public comment. Uh, it wraps at the end of this month. It giving the consultant about a week to collate all of the comments, which will then be um reviewed at the next. Um, Housing Plan Steering Committee. They'll, if if. Depending on where they land, will likely see um. A plan for recommendation and and approval come from that committee. Um, probably in the next few weeks, I would think. Might not get to the, I think, our. Hold on, let me look. We have um. Our next. Meeting for um. The Steering Committee, I think, is the thirtieth. Sure, hang on one second. Yeah, it's either the thirtieth or the thirty-first, I think, um, so we probably won't make that. September, well, we definitely would not make the September first, um, we would make the second one of the month. Likely with a final draft for consideration. On the broadband working group, no further update, it really looks like the cog is going to. Take this uh from the regional perspective, which makes a lot of sense, it's a bigger. You know, these huge companies that are looking to. Um, connect with broadband are. There, we're gonna get a better deal if we. Come together as a region versus each little small town in the northwest corner, so um that's where that's headed right now. Um, Ken Sustainability Team, they have a meeting coming up at the in the next couple of weeks, just working on the different. Action items. The K V F D Ambulance Staffing Committee hasn't met um in a couple of months. The K V F D Ambulance Staffing Committee hasn't met, um, in a couple of months. I know Bonnie was looking to get a meeting on the docket for the next couple of weeks. Main Street Noise and Traffic, Glenn?
Yeah, we, uh, we have not met the last couple of, uh, weeks. I think we, our next meeting is Thursday, the first of September, after our next regular meeting. Uh, and, um, uh, yeah, and, and really it's about, um, you know, it, it, it's about enforcement, um, that's, that's the big thing, and a lot of my questions have been answered about how often uh, does Trooper Fisher respond to certain calls in this town roughly? Uh, and, um, that was part of my, uh, my, my looking into data, uh, for the next, for the next meeting, but, uh, but those in traffic would like to, to have a, a, a second, uh, report uh, to you fairly, fairly soon, um, but, um, some of that might depend on what happens with, uh, the SRO.
Okay. Streetscape Building Committee, I don't think Mike is on the call, but I think we've had a fair discussion about that. Um, Swift House Task Force, is Zan on the call?
I didn't see her.
No, they have, um, their, um, survey out, which had a resend, I think Friday, um, and I know they'll, Glenn, I'm sorry, I apologize, you're.
That, that's right, no, that's.
He's always here, so I didn't want to not.
Yeah, that, that survey's out and I've been looking at, at, at that data and, um, and Jean, it's good that you're gonna meet with, uh, uh, John Worthington, um, because I think, um, you know, I mean, at the last meeting, there, there was just some frustration about where, where do we go from here? How, how much work do we need to do? There's, you know, there could be more work on this committee. Um, you know, do we meet twice a month as, as to once a month and, uh, you know, wh- when, when, when we first, um, talked about this version of, of the Swift House, we talked about six months. Uh, and, and it's about six months, actually, uh, and, um, you know, and we, I think the group would like to have a viable report, um, uh, you know, given to this group. Uh, uh, in, in, you know, at some point, uh, in the near future, to do that, I think we just need especially, again, from my point of view, I've said this before, and I said it in the last meeting, um, we just kind of need an idea of what needs to be done to be, to get that building to be ADA approved, and we need at least a, a rough estimate of how much funding that would require. Um, because every other point is gonna move after that. I mean, uh, you know, we can only use the building if it is ADA approved, uh, and, um, and a lot of what we intend to write in the report revolves a lot around that, so, you know, we've said this before, you know this, and, um, and any, any help you can give us in that regard would be, will be good.
And I think going back to the charge of the committee might help steer you somewhat, um, and relying on that data that you're getting from the survey.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the survey's good, and, uh, and, and, and thanks to you for, for helping write it and all that, so, uh, that's, so we'll, we'll digest all that information at some point and put that in the report.
You just reset the survey back out, is that what I gathered?
Yeah, it was on and automated, um, I had scheduled it, gosh, a week and a half ago or something, so, because the, the Swift House Committee, I attended the last meeting or the meeting before that, I forget, but we came up with basically a schedule, um, just like we did for ARPA and it, you know, had, this is when we wanted to hit just Facebook, this is when we, you know, we did an initial send and then we did, um, I think we did one Facebook post, then we did this one, and then it's gonna, um, I think there's another Facebook post planned for this Friday, um, yeah.
So.
And then it won't meet that, sorry, it'll miss the September, um, newsletter, it will already, have already closed by then.
So how, how long has the survey been out and when do we think we're gonna, well, when do we think this should be closed?
Well, they said, the, you guys set a date.
We did, yeah.
Hold on one sec.
It's not in front of me right now.
Yeah, I have it right here, so, um, it closes at midnight on August, or eleven fifty-nine PM, on August twenty-seventh.
August twenty-seventh, okay.
And we do see like Friday, um, Saturday, there was a pop, you can see in the data.
Yeah.
Um, there were like fifty, fifty-five responses, um, over the, the two days when that second reminder went out.
Yeah, that's been.
Which you would expect completely.
It's been good response. Great, thank you, that's all I got.
Um, Selectmen's Reports?
I had a question, I don't know if it's a real report, um, the, um, the, 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 the noise with the rooster, uh, has that, um, where are we with that? Um, that was, I mean, there was a couple of meetings ago, and, uh, I think, Jean, you were gonna talk to town attorney and figure things out, has anything happened with that? Have you heard anything else?
No.
Okay, wasn't on agenda and, um, so, okay, so you've heard nothing, nor have I. I mean, should that go anywhere from here or what, or are we just gonna wait from?
Um, I don't think, I, I don't think so. Sorry, I'm trying to see all of the participants, there we go, somebody's got a hand up. Rufus, did you have anything for reports?
No, I'm pretty much committee free at the moment, except for I sent Andy all my contact information if the veterans want to get it all.
And so for my end of reporting, um, the Lyndseys, um, were okay with not being part of the committee. I know that I'm, I'm confident that that committee will reach out to them when and if they need to, because they're such great sources. Um, we continue to have an issue, um, of really, really big crowds at the, um, the North Kent. So the other side of North Kent Road, so if you go down North Kent, up Route seven, um, and it lets out at that, there's some federal property, there's some deep property, we have the, the town has the road, um, I don't know, two or three weekends ago, I went down to just check the level of garbage, because we have a couple of volunteers that are very nicely, thank you, Rob Hayes, I see you on the call. Um, they go out Monday mornings and they pick up garbage on River Road, on North Kent Road, um, Bull's Bridge. And it's been growing, and so I went Sunday evening, two or three weeks ago, at like six-thirty. And I immediately heard bounding music, I went down onto the riverbank expecting to find a big crowd on this side of the, um, riverbank. And it was one family on this side of the riverbank, but on the other side of the riverbank, there were probably seventy-five to a hundred people in the water, out of the water, incredibly loud music that I could hear from the railroad tracks when I was driving down North Kent Road. Um, I was kind of perplexed at how they could have possibly gotten down there, so they're parking on the other side at the end of River Road. We have a gate that gets locked, um, at the, I don't know, Rick, are you still on the call? Um, what is it, a quarter mile in? That, um, that gate on River Road gets locked over the summer so that it's just people walking, the intent is, is for people who want to use the, the road to walk on and also, you know, hook into the Appalachian Trail or take up in the Appalachian Trail at the end of River Road. So I called the troop, they sent out, um, a car, and it turns out, I went to check the gate, they asked me to go check the gate to make sure that somebody hadn't cut the lock, which has happened in the past. The lock was intact, so they're coming down the other side of North Kent Road, um, where, um, off Skiff Mountain Road down and that sort of comes down and makes a turn at Austin Brown's house there. Um, I don't know if y'all have ever driven down it, I drove down it in our farm truck once, twenty years ago, and I, I would never drive my vehicle down there, um, but apparently there are a lot of people who are willing to do that. The previous Board of Selectmen, um, we did pass a motion to put a gate, um, on that North Kent Road that is after any of the homes, there's a couple of houses up at the top, and a gate down at the, you know, where the North Cape, North Kent Road on this side, there's a Y, and then it, it meets and starts the little dirt road, um, to put one there, um, the Kent Land Trust, we're trying to work with them because we don't want to cut off access to that road, obviously, because then they can't get into the preserve that's down there. But we, there was, I think it was that same weekend, I, it all sort of smudges together these days. Um, we did end up having an ambulance call down there for an acutely ill, um, obstetric emergency. There was no way that we could have gotten an ambulance down there, so at that point, it really came down to a public safety issue. So we have had, um, one DPW guy with their truck across, um, North Kent Road on this end, um, and at River Road, because the, the lock had been cut previously. Just to inform people, the, the area is closed to the, the crazy traffic that was happening. And I'm sorry, and also at the top of North Kent Road, um, and so they've been in place on Sundays, First Light approached, um, Andrew, because they were, um, they got some grant funding, hang on, um, and so they have been able to have, um, they're paying for a part-time trooper. I think it's on Saturdays, I'd have to double check. Um, so, but again, Bull's Bridge is extremely busy, I don't know if you look when you're passing there, heading down to New Milford, I mean, it's completely packed every single weekend, so we've, you know, we're still dealing with that, um, you know, big, big influx of visitors, and, um, so for right now, you know, versus instead of paying, we're not gonna pay a trooper to come, pay him an overtime hourly rate, five hour minimum hourly rate is well over a hundred dollars an hour, um, so we have the three, and we reevaluate every week. But we're having the three, um, sort of stand by and inform the public, um, of that it's, there, these areas are not meant for swimming, they're not meant for partying, um, because Rob Hayes, I'm sure, can attest the enormous amount of garbage that ends up being down there. So we, we really need to, in the next budget season, sort of finally really face this and come up with some sort of solution. The solution's gonna be people, um, you know, personnel. I did see, um, the commissioner of Deep, so there is obviously some of that land down there is state land, and they're sort of a big piece of this, um, I recently saw the commissioner, um, and she's very open to having a conversation with me about how we can, um, you know, work together to find some actual solution. HVA has been great, but they've had difficulty finding people for their Rio program, which is those, um, it's like a paid part-time, uh, river intern, where they go down to the river, go to these hotspots, um, up along, all the way up to Massachusetts, there's a couple in Falls Village, and, um, our Bull's Bridge and North Kent Road, and they, they give people garbage bags, and the family that I talked to when I was there, they were very grateful for those folks. But they're, you know, they're a, a drop in the bucket, and, you know, one little tiny layer of, of, a much more layered um, solution to this. I think it's time that we really have to just start thinking realistically about some, getting some resources down there, and it would be nice to see if we can partner with the state government, um, on some, you know, to see if they can, they, they're not gonna put people there, they have, they don't have enough employees as it is, and they're not gonna, you know, their NCON is bare bones, they're, um, their park rangers are bare bones, and, but if they can, if they can give us some funding to help us fund positions for, you know, summertime workers to, and create a program where we're managing the entry, um, I think it's, we need to, we need to do something, just shutting the road to most people is not the solution. And that may involve, you know, having to manage the garbage down there, getting a dumpster or getting a porta potty, I, I don't know what it will ultimately look like, but we do need to take a, a, a true strong look at finding solutions for this in the next budget cycle. Things do, um, sort of ebb off once we hit Labor Day, but you know, with the weather, who knows, there, there's, not sure why they're coming to use the river, because there's no water in the river. Um, but I know that the family that I spoke to were lovely and they, they said they've been coming here for two years and it's such a wonderful spot, they, they don't come with big groups, it's just their family, so you know, I want to be respectful of anybody who wants to use the river and, and use those lands to enjoy, you know, and recreate. So I think we need to just face that and, and start to manage it. So that was the, the big piece, I see, Donna, is that your hand? Yes, sorry, your lily pads, you had your hand up?
Okay, just for public comments, I don't know if you're ready for public comment or not.
Fantastic, start us off.
Um, well, I, um, I know Glenn had asked one question about the roosters, if people are calling me and saying, are you changing the regulations? What's going on with that? Um, and I don't have an answer to give them, so, um, any, you know, input on that would be great.
Could you repeat, repeat the first part? You're a little bit, um, echoey.
Oh.
I missed, I heard the regulations, but I didn't hear the rest.
Um, getting people who are calling to ask me if the regulations are gonna be changed regarding roosters. And I don't have any answer for that, so, um, if you could let my office at least, you know, keep us in the loop on this, that would be great. Um, with regard to the Housing Affordability Plan, they are gonna be presenting their final plan on September eighth to Planning and Zoning, it is on Planning and Zoning's agenda. Um, that's gonna be done, um, um, I was gonna talk about the overtime for the public work guys and where that money is gonna be coming from, um, this budget season. Um, and then just curious as to why the cert members aren't getting involved in any of this, um, since they are volunteers for that kind of stuff. And the flag poles, you talked about the flag policy, but where, whatever happened to the new flag pole that we were gonna put up outside? Um, that's not, that seems to have dropped off into outer space and I was just wondering, you know, where that is, um. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I didn't have it stay on the agenda because it's an, it really, to me, it's an agenda, I mean, a budget item so that we should talk about it at budget season, because it is gonna be, you know, a cost to the town.
I'm curious, because it wasn't a budget item when it first came up, and so I'm just curious as to why all of a sudden now it's become a budget item, that's all.
And do we have any other public comment? I'm scanning the room. Hands up, anybody? Gonna have a last call? Don't see anybody. So it is, according to Apple, it is six twenty-eight, and I will make, um, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Anyone questions about adjourning? All those in favor?
Good night.
Thank you, have a great evening, everybody.
You too.